I have like a little scar where I cut a chunk out of my, the palm of my hand.
And just a reminder, we are now live if you want to change, share that story with the entire community, but.
We didn't want to say anything.
The regular meeting of the Mishawaka County Council for Monday, February 15th, 2021 will please come to order. This evening, once again, consistent with the terms of Governor Holcomb's various executive orders, as well as the orders of our local San Joseph County Health Department, we will be operating under some altered procedures here in our chamber and some limited attendance numbers. And with that in mind, we are providing the opportunity for members of the public to participate in our meeting remotely. Members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments that they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing their public comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank everyone, whether they are here or participating remotely, for their cooperation. With that, we will move into the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and remembrance of the more than 485,000 Americans who have lost their lives as a result of COVID-19.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
This is Demade.
Here.
We just got additional call in that area. Main Street, Melbury, down with the dog.
Mr. Benicki? You're muted. Mr. Benicki, you're muted.
Ron, you are still muted.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of February 1st, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then amendments will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President. We have a letter from the City Plan Commission regarding their recommendations from their February 9th meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka Plan Commission was held at the above referenced date at which time the following proposed ordinance was considered. Petition number 2021-01, a petition submitted by RUDRA 26 LLC requesting to rezone 1333 Lincoln Way East from C4 Automobile Oriented Commercial District to C1 General Commercial District. The commission with a vote of 7 to 0 recommended approval pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-4-605. The Mishawaka Plan Commission hereby certifies to the Mishawaka Common Council the attached proposed ordinance regarding the above matter. This is signed by Kerry Myers, Administrative Planner and Secretary to the Mishawaka Plan Commission.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, so we will move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-10, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, is from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C4 Automobile Oriented Commercial District to C1 General Commercial District 1333 Lincoln Way East.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-10 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Mr. President, we have a request that proposed ordinance number 2021-11, which amends, which would need to, you'd need to amend your rules to accept this on first reading this evening. This is an ordinance establishing the Mishawaka Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to amend our agenda by adding proposed ordinance number 2021-11 under ordinances on first reading.
So moved.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to amend our council rules, or I'm sorry, to amend the agenda this evening in order to add proposed ordinance number 2021-11 under ordinances on first reading. Are there any additional questions or discussions amongst the council? Hearing none, then I call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Motion to add the proposed ordinance to the agenda passes. Proposed ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance establishing the Mishawaka Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance number 2021-11 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Resolutions.
Yes, Mr. President, I have resolution number 2021-03, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, supporting passage of Senate Bill 164, a bill being considered by the Indiana General Assembly, increasing the current Saint Joseph County inkeepers tax from 6% to 8%, and spelling out how those funds should be allocated to help develop product, enhance tourism, stimulate economic growth, and create jobs in Saint Joseph County.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, since the resolution, even though it has plenty of whereases that only we lawyers like, since it's not overly lengthy, why don't you go ahead and read it into the record, if you would, please?
Whereas in 1974, at the request of the local community, an inkeepers tax was put into place in Saint Joseph County by the Indiana General Assembly for the purpose of developing, constructing, and supporting the development of a convention center in downtown South Bend, as well as for the general support of and promotion of tourism throughout Saint Joseph County. And whereas since its adoption, the Saint Joseph County inkeepers tax has been modified from time to time by the General Assembly to meet the changing and evolving needs of the tourism industry and the community in Saint Joseph County. And whereas throughout the years, the Saint Joseph County Hotel Motel Tax Board, which includes appointees of the county's two largest cities, South Bend and Mishawaka, as well as Saint Joseph County, has allocated those tax receipts generated by the tax to drive visitor growth and spending, which has in turn stimulated new growth, new economic growth, capital investment, and job creation efforts in our communities. And whereas Saint Joseph County offers a number of unique offerings, well suited for visitors and annually attracts tourists from across the country and around the world to visit those attraction, attractions, which include the University of Notre Dame, the second most visited attraction in the state of Indiana. And whereas according to a study conducted by Cirktit Inc. in 2019, the tourism and travel industry contributed $1.1 billion to Saint Joseph County's economic, economy in 2019, with direct expenditures by tourists accounting for $708.5 million of that total, an increase of 4.7% since 2017. And whereas according to that same Cirktit study, the tourism industry generated over $266.4 million in tax revenues to government, including $106 million to the state of Indiana, $54.2 million locally, and $111.5 million to the federal government. And whereas a total of 11,507 jobs in Saint Joseph County resulted from the tourism industry in 2019, with direct spending created, creating 8,357 of those jobs, one third of which were in high wage occupations, according to the study. Whereas the tourism-generated jobs provided over $228.4 million in wages to Saint Joseph County workers, up $28 million from 2017 wages, according to the study. Section 1, Section 1, the Mishawaka Common Council joins the mayor of the City of Mishawaka in supporting the increase of the Saint Joseph County inkeepers tax, and asks the Indiana General Assembly to approve Senate Bill 164, giving Saint Joseph County the ability to adopt additional tools to develop additional product that will spur economic growth, new capital investments, and jobs. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the common council and the mayor.
Thank you. Well done, as usual. And with that, we will move into the public hearing on proposed resolution 2021-03. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Ray from the Chamber of Commerce, offices at 101 North Michigan Street in downtown South Bend. Thanks for the chance to be with you here this evening, and the resolution really spelled out many of the key points. Just wanted to add a couple other things. Really, one, most excited about developing product in the area to drive additional room nights. And so what you have seen spelled out in the proposal and in the frequently asked questions that we shared is really the different uses proposed to go along with that tax, and including a really important priority, the development of a sports complex up on the northeast side of Mishawaka there, which we think will be significant as sports tourism is the fastest-growing segment of the tourism sector. So this resolution here tonight, though, is really important. It's important that as this advances through the General Assembly, that we show broad support back in our local community. So today, the bill actually passed the Senate by a vote of 31 to 15. It now moves to the House, where Representative Devon and Representative Bauer will sponsor it there. The House is a little bit bigger of a lift sometimes, and so we are taking similar action with you, with the South Bend Council, and with the county council as well. So on next Monday night, we'll be in front of the South Bend Council, asking them to consider a very similar resolution. We'll be with the county council then on Tuesday, the 23rd, in their committee meeting, with the hope that they'll pass a similar resolution at their March 9th meeting. So we think the support of those three, the support of the mayors, of the county commissioners, of the Hotel Motel Tax Board, of the business community, of many hoteliers in town, we really tell a compelling story to the Indiana General Assembly, is we try to bring our Hotel Motel Tax in line with what some other communities have done. And just an important reminder to our citizens, this is paid by visitors, not by folks that here locally. So unless you're staying in a hotel here, you wouldn't stay in it. People have come to expect this as their travel. We don't think it influences people's decisions on where they stay. They've come to, like I say, if you were to go to Indianapolis tonight, for example, you would pay 10% on top of your hotel room night and such. So again, a way of us just to capture some additional dollars to develop product that will ultimately stimulate economy and drive those numbers that the clerk read up. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, if you had any for me.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Ray? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi, Jeff, it's nice to see you. I had a couple of questions about the Tourism Capital Improvement Fund. I don't know that we talked about that before, or if we did, I wasn't paying attention, and I apologize if I wasn't paying attention. Can you tell me a little bit about the Tourism Capital Improvement Fund? What that, the 1% that is also, what would go into the Mishawaka Sports Complex? What do you anticipate that dollar amount would be? Are there examples of tourism capital improvement funds in other communities? And a little bit about the oversight of the money?
Sure. So some great questions. So 1% is planned for the Tourism Capital Development Fund. In a pre-COVID timeframe, that's about $1 million, so that's maybe the best barometer we can use, I think, from an amount of money used. And it's intended to be a matching grant program. So if there was an attraction in town that was, had 50% already and needed a 50% match, they could come and make application here. So really, I would say quality of place, it's really intended to drive tourism nights, so maybe it's a, maybe it's a new sheet of ice somewhere, so we can host more hockey tournaments, maybe it's a concert venue where we could have concerts that folks might enjoy. Will be overseen by the Hotel Motel Tax Board, which again, mentioned sort of has appointees from the city of South Bend, city of Mishawaka, and Saint Joseph County. And so we're, it hasn't been totally, it's not in place, so we really just have the concept put in place. The frequently asked questions have a couple paragraphs related to that, and if you haven't seen that, I'll make sure you have that, where we go into just a little more thought on it.
Thanks, I looked at it. Just, so I just want to clarify one thing. So this is geared more towards capital?
Yeah, 100% aimed at capital improvements that will help drive tourism room nights.
Okay.
So, but I, and it's funny, I'm always reluctant to almost share examples because I don't want to, there's no preconceived notions about it, but maybe there's some addition at Cam Island, at Buter Park, it's something that would drive some additional room nights, maybe it's something related to sports. As I mentioned, like sports tourism is really sort of the hot thing on the tourism side. And so Evansville currently does something like this, and maybe the unique thing to ours is this matching requirement, this idea that we're going to try to take every $1 that we have for this fund and get $2 of expenditure in the communities as someone has a local match. Hopefully, we think of it like mini regional cities, if you will, where it helps us to stretch those dollars farther. So our hope is we have $2 million every year going into tourism capital improvements.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Ray? Mr. Belovich?
Jeff, do you know what, how many rooms do we have in the city of Mishawaka versus number of rooms in South Bend?
Rob DeKleen from Visit South Bend is with me, plans to testify. I'll let Rob answer that. There's generally 5,000 in the county, but, and normally, Mishawaka's about a third of that, but I'd have to, I'd be showing off my math skills if I threw an actual number, and that might embarrass, might embarrass me. But about a third of 5,000 is generally the, the number for actual Mishawaka hotel rooms.
And one other quick question, what's the threshold, where do the high wage, what's the number of high wage that we have working in the hospitality industry? What dollar amount on a yearly basis for compensation is considered high compensation?
Yep. And I may let Rob try to address that one as well. I'm sorry, I'm very sorry about that, but he a little more dialed into that than I am, so, yep. We agreed, I'd punt all hard questions his way, I'd take any, no, I'm just kidding.
Other questions for Mr. Ray?
Thank you, first and foremost, for the additional information that you provided in support of the resolution. You know, I think that was very helpful to all of us with regard to understanding the overall issues. One of, in your frequently asked questions document, one of the important points that you touched on was the understandable concern about raising a tack, tax in, you know, the midst of a public health emergency. Can you touch on that a little bit, just for benefit of the public, perhaps?
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's a great question, because, and I think all communities are wrestling with that just a little bit. Because the consumers are paying it, and we don't think historically it's driven any room nights, we haven't felt like it has a negative impact on any of our businesses that, that have had it. Nobody, for example, is staying in Niles instead of here because Niles doesn't have the tax. I do think, though, we're open to some conversation with hotels. We have quite a few hotels already that have signed off on that, but, but some have expressed concern about dates, and so I think the, maybe some of the final debate that's happening in the General Assembly might be an effective date. And if, and if the hotel industry felt like that needed to be January 1st and July 1st, I think there's a lot of flexibility there. Maybe the final reminder I would make, that I didn't say in my initial remarks, that what the general, the action the General Assembly is taking is just enabling this to be passed locally, so it doesn't put it into effect locally. The Saint Joseph County Council would have to adopt it, and our preference would be they would do that shortly after the General Assembly session, but it, but it's important that there's another vote that has to happen prior.
And I think you may have touched on this, but in your follow-up, in your supplementary information, this really, if it was passed at the state level and then adopted locally, would bring us into parity with some of the other larger counties throughout the state. Is that?
Yeah, I think that's a great point there. And so when we look, for example, and not to being critical of what anybody else does, but Howard County maybe is the example, where it's the 17th largest county in the state of Indiana, who has a higher rate than, than we do. And because others are higher isn't the only reason to raise it, but as we said in the resolution, we boast the second busiest tourist attraction in Indiana. Really, the size, the scale, the number of things that are happening here, it really makes this more conducive to tourism than in Howard County does. So we think we're at a competitive disadvantage with some of those other communities right now, just because we don't have the same tools as a community, and so the preference is to really bring it in line. There's quite a few smaller counties than Saint Joseph County that already have this, and we're just trying to bring in line. We're not trying to raise it all the way to the top. In fact, the General Assembly gives the flexibility, if the county council thinks that 7 should be the rate, there's a, there's language as to how 7 would get divided as well, too. So our hope was, it truly was a community decision to really put us on par with many counties that are much smaller than we are, that don't have the assets that we do.
Well, and then as I read this, and you know, correct me if I'm wrong, not that there aren't other benefits for Mishawaka that are sprinkled throughout this tax rate, but with regard to the legislation that's currently pending, perhaps the two major changes, one we touched on in response to Mrs. Volker's really good questions about the Tourism Capital Investment Fund. And then we touched a little bit on the additional 0.4% that would be geared toward the Mishawaka Sports Complex. And if this is another question, better posed to Mr. DeKleen, Mr. Prince, or somebody, I promise I won't be offended if you directed toward them.
Yeah, so, so I, really, I think that's key. So throughout even my history working with the city of Mishawaka, never had anything specifically targeted towards Mishawaka. And so, so as we look at what the greatest opportunity is, and Mr. DeKleen could speak more to what the economic impact we anticipate of a sports complex may be, but we think that getting that to 1% is really critical to, to the formula, if you will, for getting it built and up and running and working. Our hotels are really, this is really important to them. As I mentioned to Mr. Belovich, a third of the hotel rooms are in Mishawaka, and many of those northside hotels in particular, you know, they do very well throughout the year, but, but there are also some lean times, this time of year in particular. And so the sports complex really aimed at winter months, when, when there isn't the travel that we have during a football season, or during, during summer, or something. So it really aimed at, sort of filling, filling a gap there, driving of those additional room nights. And I often use hockey as, as the example. If you think about Compton family, Ice Arena drives well over 20,000 room nights a year, and that's pretty significant when you think of the, the number of hotels that we have here and such. And so our hope is that whether it's volleyball, or basketball, or other indoor sports, that we have a really, a chance to really continue to cut away at that. And then our restaurants and our retail, and our hotels on the north side ultimately benefit from that. So as we're, I think of this more as a stimulate the economy, right? How do we come out of the pandemic stronger than we are before? By building product that's going to help us keep those hotels busy, those restaurants busy, and those retail stores busy, especially on the north side.
Thank you, thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry, I have one other question. I apologize.
That's okay.
Just a follow-up question to the Compton, it just struck me, you said that Compton generates 20,000.
Thank you, by the way, Mike.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just joking about the Compton, sorry.
Oh, thanks, Mike. Is that inclusive of Notre Dame hockey games, or is that exclusive?
Exclusive, so that's this youth hockey tournament that happened out there throughout the course of the year.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution, please come forward.
Good evening, Rob DeKleen, Executive Director of Visit South Bend, Mishawaka. Just a few more details about your questions. There are just over 5,000 hotel rooms in Mishawaka, and it really is, excuse me, in San Joseph County. It's truly evenly split, almost right down by one-third, 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 with the city of Mishawaka, the city of South Bend, and then Saint Joseph County. What I would suggest to you with that, with that 5,000 number, that's the, that's the sort of remarkable number, that's a lot for Saint Joseph County. And then the cover of the Tribune on Friday showed the construction progress at Four Winds, which is going to add another 321 rooms to Saint Joseph County. And then there's another, about 75 rooms under construction in Roseland at La Quinta. So before too long, really, I could, it's probably safe to say by early '23, about two years from now, we're going to be looking at almost 5,500 rooms. The high-wage jobs, I would just say, we don't have a direct figure, and by the way, Deb, I can get you, we have an Excel spreadsheet with the exact breakdown, so I'll get that to you tomorrow, and then she can share it with you. So you'll see the, we have it broken down by property and then by municipality. The high-wage jobs are really, just really sort of, what I would classify as salaried positions. So with, with an industry that robust with 5,000 rooms, the home of Notre Dame football, multiple conference facilities, there's a lot of management in there, so there's a lot of professional salespeople, general managers, support managers, if you will. But it's really just the notion of a salaried position. And then just with sports tourism, just to echo Jeff's sentiments, I can't tell you enough about how burgeoning of a market it is for us, and that is without this proposed facility that we've been working for years with trying to make happen with your city leadership. So in 2019, again, pre-pandemic, we had about 39,000 hotel room nights as a result of youth sports. None of that is Notre Dame sports at all. We never count Notre Dame football, basketball, hockey, you name it, it's all just youth sports tourism. Just to tell you how strong it is, but just last year, in 2020, obviously revenue significantly down, we still did over 20,000 room nights with sports tourism. So again, all of that without this, this complex. So we're very excited about it, we think it could be truly a game changer. And just going back on Compton, my last point, Compton really taught us what we can do. And so Compton showed us that with a facility like that, paired with the ice box in downtown South Bend, it really brought to the forefront, what I think to be our most strategic advantage in Saint Joseph County, and that's our location. So we're on an interstate, we're close to Chicago, close to Detroit, Cleveland, Indy, you name it, and we're sort of right in the middle. This particular location in northeast Mishawaka, it's right by exit 83. For those of you with kids that maybe have anything to do with Grand Park, if you've been to Grand Park, I like to use the analogy that we're, we're Grand Park without Grand Park, or, excuse me, we're, we have everything but Grand Park, and then Grand Park doesn't have what we have. So we have all the North Maine, North Grape Road corridor, hotels, restaurants, shopping, bowling, kids' things to do, you name it, and direct interstate access at exit 83. What we don't have is this facility. So we can make up for that by the successful development and completion of it, and I think it will be hugely impactful, not just to Mishawaka hotels, but to really Saint Joseph County in general.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. DeKleen?
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, councilmembers, David Wood, Mayor, and boy, if there was ever a meeting, if there was ever a night where a Zoom meeting was appropriate, it would probably be tonight, but I appreciate the fact that you're here in person, says a lot about our community. Here to support resolution 2021-3 and urge you to do the same. It, in essence, supports Senate Bill 164 that made it out of the Senate today into the House. While the bill is not perfect, we are here in support of its benefits to Mishawaka and the greater region. It will take us effectively to 1% of the hotel motel tax. And prior to last year, we received really no dedicated funding for that. We did receive some fundings based on requests that we had made for different projects over time, but we never really had a dedicated funding source. And so this dedicated funding source, we believe is big for Mishawaka. It helps us to develop an athletic complex that you've heard so much about here recently. And the study says that Mishawaka is the spot for it, and we have site control on exactly where this will be, and we have been building infrastructure to get to this site. So this is kind of the, the perfect timing of funding coming in for us being prepared for it. And as you heard, too, when you go to other communities, which we have as members of Mishawaka and traveling with Visit South Bend, Mishawaka, gone to several communities to see what they have done, Mishawaka is very well suited for this. And we believe, too, that we, as you've heard, have the infrastructure in place to support this. Typically, these things come up in the middle of a farm field and things develop around it. Well, we've already got the development, but we also have the farm field ready to go, waiting for development, and it's uniquely situated, close to travel amenities such as the Indiana Toll Road, Capitol Avenue, and between Douglas, Cleveland, and just east of the Judea Creek Golf Course, and in an area that I personally could envision as being our kind of sports and entertainment district out there. We know that it will lead to more economic development, but also more people coming to Mishawaka. Having been a parent of a volleyball player and traveling really the country, going to places like this, there's nothing like it around. We had to travel often to Grand Rapids, to Indianapolis, to Fort Wayne, or to Chicago, and that's just the closest ones that we would have to travel to, that we could find. And typically, what you would see would be thousands of people in any given weekend there to, you know, observe their children playing sports, or to attract all kinds of different sporting events. And so. And so we're in the hole of the donut, right here with a great site. And we have a great partnership that is ready to go with dedicated funding. And we think that this is going to be huge for the city of Mishawaka and for the greater region. And we're still in the process of studying. We had a study, now we're looking at maybe expanding it a little bit to include things like ice sheets. And so it's my goal, I threw out, to get in the ground with groundbreaking this year. I don't know if we're going to quite reach that goal, but we're going to be pretty darn close. I'm optimistic about that. And so with your support, I think it sends a strong message that our community is united in support of this council administration and economic development community. And we know that it will be a major driver of what we call heads in beds, bringing people in to support not only this facility, but our local economy, many of the jobs that are here, and also what I would call feeding the beast that we already have, which is, you know, second or third biggest retail restaurant market anywhere in the state of Indiana. So we're ideally set up for this and think that it, it will, like I said, be a major economic development project for us.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Wood? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then I'll inquire, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed Then are there any council members who wish to speak? Let me just again thank everyone for their work on this, including bringing this resolution to us along with the supporting material. And we appreciate all that. I also want to acknowledge the work of one of our friends in the State House, Senator Nizgaevsky, who I had an opportunity to speak with, and I think we all appreciate his work on behalf of the community in Mishawaka in particular, to make sure that we're added to the mix with regard to this legislation. So thank you, Senator Nizgaevsky. And with that, if there are no other questions or comments, then I'll call for the questions. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 920.
Ordinance is on second reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number 2021-09, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Mishawaka rescinding Resolution Number 2010-21 and Resolution Number 2012-03 pertaining to petitions of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1802 West Sixth Street in Mishawaka, Indiana. I do have proof of, from the police officer that, that took the notice to Pipers, and we also have sent it by certified return receipt requested, and we have proof of that as well. We've put it on, we've noticed it everywhere that it is required to notice it. And you have everything, I think I?
Thank you. On the record will reflect that notice has been delivered. With that, may we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom referred the matter, the proposed ordinance number 2021-09, reported that they have examined said matter, and it's their opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for acceptance.
Same here. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any questions or further discussion? Then Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the committee report?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes 920.
Thank you. We will then move into second reading of public hearing of proposed ordinance 2021-09. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Perhaps I'll inquire if Mr. Emmons would like to make some comments since he was actively involved?
I think Mr. Triple was talking up.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Triple, Attorney at Law, 420 Lincolnway West, Mishawaka. Pursuant to the request of Mr. Emmons, I have drafted an appropriate ordinance that would rescind previous actions of the council and the Board of Zoning Appeals approving use variances for the property at 1802 West, excuse me, Sixth Street. There was various violations regarding written commitments and related pursuant to the previous passages. I'd be glad to have Mr. Hinkle address those specifically because, as the council's aware, there's litigation ongoing against the city of Mishawaka to enforce those covenants. I'd be glad to answer any questions as you may.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Triple? Mr. Emmons?
Yes, Mr. Triple, I just want to thank you personally for your work in doing this proposed ordinance to rescind the, I don't want to say the, the variance that the Pipers have.
Very good.
And I really appreciate your work on this.
You're welcome, Mike.
I know it's been a long time coming, but I appreciate your work.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Triple? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward.
My name is Pat Hinkle. I'm Corporation Counsel for the city of Mishawaka, and my office is here in City Hall. This, just by way of history, the use variance that was, was originally issued to Mr. Piper was that he would be allowed to operate a commercial automotive body repair maintenance shop within the I-1 Light Industrial District, subject to the following conditions. The use variance shall be limited to automotive body repair and automotive maintenance, and it's limited to indoors. No outside storage of materials and/or vehicle parts will be permitted. There were some other conditions regarding landscaping, exterior lighting. Number four was all employees shall park within the fenced area on the property and not on the adjacent streets. I'm just pointing out the ones that have been violated. Overnight parking in the fenced area lot shall be limited to the temporary staging of cars being worked on. This lot shall not be used for long-term storage of vehicles. And then there were two, or there's another one regarding signage and hours of operation, which have not been an issue. So those are the ones that have been the issue. So what we did is we filed a lawsuit in St. Joe County Court, in St. Joe County Circuit Court, because there had been repeated violations, and I think everybody on the council is aware of that, and continued violations with no, no effort by the owner to cure the violations. So the, let me get to the lawsuit. If I can. Okay, the complaint that we filed was filed on November the 5th of 2020. And in the complaint, we alleged that, first of all, that the defendant, which would be Mr. Piper and the owner and the business itself, are in violation of the use variance by engaging in the following conduct: outside storage of vehicles, materials, and/or vehicle parts; employees parking on adjacent streets; cars repaired, car repairs outside the enclosed building; using streets and sidewalks for staging or repair of vehicles; and long-term storage of vehicles in the fenced-in lot. Attached to the complaint were a number of citations and correspondence from the city to Mr. Piper, asking him to get into compliance with the variance, as he had promised to when the variance was passed by the council. And he hasn't done any of that. As far as I know, that hasn't been done to date. The court has ordered him to comply by March the 4th, and if he doesn't, then the court will proceed with the trial scheduled for March the 26th. If he complies by March the 4th, then there's no trial. And the compliance has to be to the satisfaction of Ken Prince, the city of Mishawaka city planner. He's a named plaintiff in the case, as we were required to do by statute. So that's the, that's the genesis of this whole thing. The ordinance that was drafted by Mr. Triple, and I thank him for doing that, was at the request of Mr. Emmons. And the, and if you have any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's really all the background that I have on this particular issue.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hinkle, Mrs. Volker?
I'm sorry, I just always have questions. So one of the things that I was, as I was listening to and kind of listening to the timeline, if, you said that if Mr. Piper is in compliance by the time the court date occurs, then, then he's in compliance and ostensibly he could continue to operate his business, correct?
By March the 4th.
March the 4th.
Because March the 5th, we have a, a conference with Judge Broden, at which time the parties will inform the judge whether or not Mr. Piper has, is in compliance. If he's in compliance at that time, the judge is going to, he'll continue the trial. We won't have a trial.
But, so I have a follow-up question to that. If we vote on the rescinding?
I'm sorry, if I could interrupt. Mr. Hinkle, particularly with the mask, it's difficult for the speakers to pick you up if, when you're positioned away from the microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So if you could, thank you.
So I might be asking the obvious. If we, if we, if we rescind the variance this evening, and Mr. Piper is able to come into compliance by March 4th, he's, doesn't have a variance to operate?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand correctly.
And presumably, he'd have to reapply for a variance, or I understand that there is a purchaser who, and I think he's here this evening, I called him this morning, asked him to be here, that is interested in buying the property, and then that purchaser, if you guys rescind the variance, then that purchaser would have to, would have to convince you to, to reinstate it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank Mr. Hinkle for his work on this proposed ordinance, and that I know you've been working on it for a year or so, but we've been handling, tried to handle it for about the last 10 years to get something done. And that, and I appreciate your work, Mr. Triple's work, and Mr. Prince's work on this ordinance, and that it's a long time overdue to correct the situation that has been out of hand, and it's been nothing good for the, for the area. We're out there on Hendrickson Sixth Street, the neighbors have complained, I get numerous phone calls, and I'm glad to see it could come to an end with all the problems that we've had. Mr. Piper has neglected to live up to the variance that he fully agreed to when it was signed, and he's disregarded it on a number of occasions, and I don't see anywhere that it's going to be changed. And that, I go by it today, the lot is still packed with cars, demolished cars, there's cars on the street, and that, and I just don't see anywhere where he's trying to abide by the variance that he has, and that, and I think we need to take action tonight and rescind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
And again, thank you, Mr. Triple and Mr. Prince. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Other questions for Mr. Hinkle? I'm sorry, Mr. Belovich?
Mr. Hinkle, I know that the administration has sent a number of letters out to him. Did he, did Mr. Piper respond at all to any letter at any time?
No.
And we've seen no effort at all to comply with what he was expected to do?
No effort to comply. The only time we ever got a response was after we filed suit. Then he, he did respond by attending the telephone status conference with Judge Broden. But Mr. Prince, on several times, has tried to get Mr. Piper to comply with it. Mr. Prince even offered to go out there and walk through the property with Mr. Piper and tell him exactly what it is that we need to have him do to come into compliance. And Mr. Piper never contacted Mr. Prince, as far as I know, to set up a time to do that. In fact, we had all asked to go, Mr. Prince, myself, and another member of Mr. Prince's staff, to go out and, and help him. We've tried repeatedly to get him to come within compliance, and at the same time, code enforcement has been monitoring him and issuing citations for parking on the sidewalk and other violations. So not only is he, has he been violating the conditions that he agreed to when he got this specialty use variance, he's also violating the code requirements, building code requirements. So it's, it's been a, I say I've only been here a year, but I'm, I understand from everything that I've read and all the documents and from speaking to Mr. Emmons, that it's been an ongoing problem for years.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Hinkle?
Hi, Mr. Hicksonbaugh, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Mammalanti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Hinkle, for your presentation. Just for the record, do you have a number of citations that have been written over the course of the original variance?
Let me, they were attached as an exhibit to the complaint. And, okay, that's the very thing. All right, we have, an exhibit to the complaint was filed, and it's Exhibit Number 3 is, this isn't the number of citations, but it's a 26-page exhibit with letters, starting with a July, a letter from my office, this is Plaintiff's Group Exhibit Number 3, a letter from, a lot of this was just in the past year, from Mr. Prince. Let's see, the resolution, photographs, and we've compared photographs from years ago, overhead photographs, showing the same vehicles parked in this parking lot. They haven't moved.
And I apologize, I didn't, didn't mean for you to do this much work, but I guess I was just making a point that a plethora of emails, phone calls, citations have been issued to that property, correct, and that business?
Yes, and Mr. Van Nevel with the Code Enforcement Department is continuing to cite those, some of the later ones are not part of this exhibit because they were, they were created, or they occurred after we filed the complaint. So even after we filed the complaint, there were still some, but yes, it goes back. But yes, it goes back a pretty long time here. Let's see.
And not to bore you with memories, but I remember when this was on our table to be voted on originally, I believe. I could be wrong. But I'm almost positive that every single council member physically went to that property and spoke with Mr. Piper and got a true understanding of what he was promising to do. I know I had visited his location several times thereafter and spoke with him and had a mutual agreement as to what needed to be done. And it's just, it's a sad situation because, you know, obviously, he's a busy mechanic. He puts out a good product. And if he could just follow the rules and the agreement that we wouldn't be in this position today. So I just wanted to make that note. So thank you again for your efforts and your work to all those involved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramalante. Other questions for Mr. Henkel? Mr. Henkel, a couple of follow-ups then. With regard to the ongoing litigation, at any point in time, as part of the proceedings, has Mr. Piper made any representations to the court that he has remediated any of the shortcomings that you noted this evening and that are set out in this proposed ordinance?
At the last status conference we had, he told the judge that he purchased some kind of equipment that would allow him to start moving vehicles. But he said that the weather had interfered with his ability to do that. And so honestly, the judge seemed encouraged that we would, that he would get these things resolved by March 4th so that we wouldn't have an evidentiary hearing. The judge said, you know, he really doesn't want to hold a whole day open for a trial if, you know, it's going to get resolved. So he was clear to Mr. Piper that he wanted this, wanted him to do these things. And although there's no order, it's just, you know, here's what you can do to get yourself out of this mess. Because he also warned Mr. Piper that he can't represent a corporation. And a corporation is one of the defendants in this case. So while he may be able to represent himself, he can't represent a corporation. So that would be an unrepresented or undefended party. It's a, and Mr. Piper indicated that he doesn't have the resources to hire a lawyer and those sorts of things either. So quite honestly, it's a mess for the court and for the council, for both, and the City of Mishawaka.
So then, if I understood you correctly, the representation that's been made by Mr. Piper to the court was that he has begun the preparations to address the areas of non-compliance. But there have been no representations that any of these various issues have been addressed and brought into compliance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then with respect to the current status of the litigation, you've mentioned a couple of times this evening the most recent order of the court and where it's at procedurally. And as I understand it, it's set for trial?
Yes.
Subject to some interaction between the parties to try to address or to try to confirm whether there has been compliance that's been engendered on the part of Mr. Piper?
Correct.
But as we stand here this evening, are you aware of any orders of the court that would preclude the council from taking the action that's suggested by the proposed ordinance that's in front of us this evening?
No.
Okay. And then jumping back to my earlier questions, and I apologize for being a little bit out of order, Counselor. As you stand here this evening, are you independently aware of any tangible efforts on the part of Mr. Piper to try to bring this property into compliance with the requirements of the use variance?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Seeing no one, then I will inquire, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. All right, then, in this time, we will invite anybody who is physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. If you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Jonathan Piper. That's 222 Borley Street, Mishawaka. I don't have no excuses. All I know, I've been going through a divorce for the last three years. Everything has been locked down. I couldn't get rid of anything, can't move anything, any of the assets. We did pick up a rollback. I have made progress on moving cars. I took like five cars out of there already. I cleaned out some of the building. I took like probably 6,000 pounds of stuff out of the building with a dump trailer. It was there today. You can ask Woody. He drove by, sitting out there, the tow truck's sitting out there. We are moving cars. The snow is definitely hindering us a lot. My buyer for the building is here today. I don't want the business the way it is. I just had to get through this divorce in order to get to the point where I can do something about it. I want to downsize, I want to keep it small. I don't need, it's just me. So I don't know what to say. I mean, I got to march with the judge. I, like I said, we are moving stuff. There is stuff moving. There's just so much stuff to move. And I said all that I can ask is, I mean, maybe they can let it go till the March date with the judge and see if anything changes. Because that's all I got. I can't defend anything that's going on. I can't say that I didn't do it. I can't say it ain't there, because it is. I'm just asking, that's what I need. I mean, we are moving stuff. I mean, there is stuff moved. I mean, if you want proof of it, I can take pictures. But I don't think I'd need to bring pictures of showing cars. I mean, I'm sure you can believe me. If I tell you I moved them, I moved them. And they are some out of the building. I'm trying to get stuff cleared out inside too, at the same time, so I can put stuff back inside the building that's unsightly that can go back in there like originally was planned. Everything was planned in my mind the way it should have been, the way it was talked about. I didn't intend for it to get to this point. And now, I don't even have a working crew anymore. I'm down about three people inside the shop. So I'm very limited on the people I got. I got just enough work to maybe keep the business open to a point where I can even keep it open. So that's why I got my buyer to buy it, because he can take over from that. And I become a tenant rather than a landlord or whatever. So if I don't comply with him, he can evict me. I mean, that's all it's to, I mean, that's what it is. But other than that, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Piper? Mr. Hazen?
I just wish you would have responded back to the city and showed some kind of effort that you were working with. Mr. Emmons has put up with it for a long time. I've only had to hear about it for the last year and that. And it's pretty frustrating as a businessman to know there's a guy out there that's trying to save his business, but he has no communication with anybody. And then you come to us at the last minute and say you want our help. It's kind of, it puts us in a hard spot.
Yeah, I don't, I said, I would, yeah. I don't, I mean, a judge has got a date. So irregardless, it's going to be that date. It's going to be, if I don't comply by that, he's going to do what he has to do too, you know? So I mean, all it's going to do is chop my legs out from underneath me just to get to that point. I mean, if it didn't happen, he's going to do it anyway. So if they gave it to that point, I mean, it'd be the same thing at that time. I mean, I do have customers and clientele that I had to, would have to finish up. So I don't even know, I'm going to give people's cars. But I don't know how I'd even handle that.
Other questions? Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Piper, you've been before us a number of times. And it's been probably over 10 years since this variance was put in for you to have an auto shop there on Sixth Street. And from basically day one, we've had problems. You haven't complied to the variance guidelines of what Mr. Henkel said, that the variance stipulated. Now, why would we now, after 10 years of putting up with a business that did not adhere to the variance and that? In the neighborhood, the people in the neighborhood are frustrated. They're upset about you breaking your promises for what you said you would do when I toured that neighborhood to get your business in operation with your guidance and with your specific knowledge of that you would adhere to these variances. You lied to me. You lied to the neighborhood. And it's a black mark on me when I went around and got those people to support you. And what did you do? You stabbed them in the back. So how can I, right now, support not accepting this resolution, this proposed ordinance? You have nothing that you've done to improve that facility. And so we are cleaning it out on the inside. This variance, or this proposed ordinance is not for that. It's for the outside.
I know.
And it's been that way for over 10 years.
But I've been cleaning the outside too.
Well, I hate to dispute you, but I don't see where you've really made much improvement on the outside.
Gentlemen, if I can intercede for a minute. It works much better here if, when one person is speaking, the other person allows them to finish. And I promise you, we're going to allow you to say what you want to say, Mr. Piper. But I'm going to ask you to extend that courtesy to Mr. Emmons, if for no other reason, so that Madam Clerk can take minutes of these proceedings. So, Mr. Emmons, if you want to continue?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. So what I'm saying is, you basically lied to me. You lied to the community there of not keeping your word on the variance that we approved for you to have a business in that area. And it's just not been, like you say, not just one year. It's been a number of years. And you've got cars there that are years, been there for years and not have been moved. And not only in that fenced area have you violated the variance, but on-street parking, you violated that by having your people park there. You park cars that need to be repaired. And it's frustrating to the neighbors that they can't park because you've taken them up, which you told the neighborhood you wouldn't do. So, like I say, I'm going to vote to approve this proposed ordinance to cancel that variance. Thank you.
Please go ahead, sir.
With him saying, "I didn't move any cars." I did move cars. I wouldn't come here and say I didn't move cars if I didn't. I've been making a valiant effort. Like I told you, you can ask him. There's cars out there, the dump trailers out there, when he drove by today. So I know he knows it's there. He knows. I mean, granted, you had to take an aerial view to see what's moved. That's fine. I mean, there's way too many cars out there. So it's going to say, you take and move four cars out of 30 cars, you're not going to really notice a lot. But they are getting moved. I've called everybody. All the cars on the street that are not mine, the customers don't pick up, they can tag them. They're not my cars. I don't know what to say about them cars. They're not mine. If they tag them, they tag them. I told people before, I said, "The city comes by and tags your cars. I'm going to take a picture of it so they don't think I stole your car." And it's there. But I can't force people. And half the cars in the fence are not my cars. So I got another set of property that I got somebody to let me use that I can take and transport all these cars to. So it's not about finding owners or anything. It's about getting them moved. And I got them, I got access, a rollback. I mean, I can move cars. I just, like I said, now we're getting another eight inches of snow. But I mean, there will still be odds out there today moving cars. And I'm still trying to do a little bit of work and trying to move cars. And I am way behind. And like I said, for the last three years, I know cars ain't moved in three years because I couldn't move cars. I mean, I can't touch them. I couldn't touch anything. I mean, it's all marital assets that I couldn't do anything with. And now that I was solely left with my shop and the contents of the building, and I said, "Now, I got to get this cleaned up, get it back into where it's supposed to be." Because actually, my ex-wife is 51% owner of the business. So my hands are pretty much tied to do anything. She votes me off everything I do. I can't, I mean, that's, I mean, and I said, I mean, I'm, I, if you gave me the date of the judge, I could prove to you that it's going to be what it is. And then the owner, the new owner of the business, he would only buy the business if the variance sticks with the business. And that's going to deplete that sale. So then you're going to have, who knows what's going to go in there next? Or an abandoned building, like it was when I first picked it up. And I did plant all my shrubbery. And I did make a business out of it. And I know I didn't comply with everything else. But I am a good asset to the community. I have plenty of people in the community that I can probably go to and get you a petition of all the people that I help and everybody I do. Because I did do that the one time when we brought everybody in. I'm not a bad guy. I mean, I didn't apply, I didn't, granted, I mean, man, I'm a worker, man. That's what I do. I'm not a businessman. I'm not, none of that. And I didn't comply with stuff or didn't respond to stuff. I don't know how to respond to something when you've got no answers to nothing. I don't know what to say. I mean, hey, yeah, I called back, but well, you need to do something. Okay, I can't do anything right now. But like I said, I'm here today. And like I said, all I'm asking for is the date of the judge to give me a chance to see if there's anything moved or what we've got going on. And now, I mean, it, I mean, if you, it's been 10 years. I mean, another couple of weeks, it's going to make not much difference. But it will in my life, in the community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Compton?
Mr. President, this is more of a statement for maybe Mr. Prince even. I'm not sure. What is the initial zoning of this property? Do you know, Mr. President? If we repeal this, what can operate in that building?
Why don't we wait until Mr. Piper steps away from the podium, and then Mr. Prince maybe can step forward and touch on that point? Good question, Mr. Compton.
Okay, thank you. And I guess while I'm here, you know, Mr. Piper, I looked on the map. I counted 48 cars in your lot. I don't know when this picture was taken. It was taken in, it was taken in much better weather. So I presume summertime. Who knows when Google takes their pictures? But 48 cars and no response. And here we are, as Mr. Emmons said, at the 11th hour. And this is the first I've heard of, you know, I can be sympathetic to, you know, a divorce and different things that take place in a person's life that brings you to this point. But if you're not communicating and you're not talking to Mr. Henkel or others who have, from Code Enforcement or whoever, who have cited you for your issues, then we're left with not many options. My question's going to be, what is this property zoned for? If the variance, if the variance involved outside storage of vehicles and all those things, then my thought is, from what you're telling us, you could operate without it. You're a one-man shop. You don't need outside storage. You don't need cars outside. Then you could operate in that building without it. Now, whether somebody wants to buy it or not, I don't know. But those are questions I'll get answered, and you'll hear that discussion a little later on.
And like I said, just to say that, I mean, the pictures, I'm not sure when they're taken. But like I said, the divorce's been going on for three years. So I wasn't, I mean, if they're even three years old, that's going to be at the point where I can't even-
Communication. Nobody here, I think, has ever, to my knowledge, this is the first time I've heard it. So I make assumption, this might be the first time that all of us have heard it. And without that communication, we have nowhere to go except continue down the road to this collision point. No pun intended on the automotive thing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. And as a follow-up, in the second paragraph of the proposed ordinance, now that I went back and reread it, it makes reference to the underlying zoning for this person being I-1 light industrial. So Mr. Prince certainly can, you know, expand upon that. But that is the zoning upon which this use variance builds.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Piper?
Mr. President, if I may?
Mr. Manalanti.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Hello, Mr. Piper. How are you? Well, thank you for coming out and giving us a long overdue explanation. I have a couple of questions for you. If you recall my last visit to your location, we did a brief tour and you explained, car by car, of the history of them, how long they've been there, why you can't get rid of them in terms of not your property. You briefly mentioned that in your presentation this evening. How many of those indoor cars have you been able to remove or contact the owner?
I've contacted the owner on probably three cars, the ones that I can get a hold of. The rest of them, like I said, I got alternative storage that can go out there and they can get mechanic cleans on them, but they can sit because it's basically a junkyard. So it's not an issue of how many cars they can put. I just gotta move them from that property out there. So I don't break any laws of taking somebody's car or doing something else. But I do have, like I said, plenty of storage for the cars to take them out of there and move everything out that doesn't really pertain to the shop, as in being repaired or anything like that.
Okay. And the other question is, you had mentioned that your ex-wife or soon-to-be ex-wife is fifty-one percent owner. Does that influence the sale of your business? Or has that been signed off?
It's not been signed off. She's still on the mortgage and all that. But in the court proceedings for the divorce, as of, I think, is January, they left me the building, which she's, her name's still on it and the corporation's still a corporation. But she's not gonna contest me moving anything because she has no, she's got what, she's got two or in the divorce, so she has no want to have anything with what's left at the shop. So she, there is no contention of what I do with it now.
I guess the reason for the question is, you'd presented that you would sell the business to a person that's in the audience tonight, and you would just be a tenant. Is that correct?
Correct. And from, just not to interrupt, but from that point on, probably way, way better businessman than I would be, somebody that handles public relations more or that kind of stuff, not a worker, you know what I mean? So he, whatever issues would arise, he could handle that stuff because that's, I mean, he's, that's what he does.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Piper? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wish, physically present, who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Brandon. Last name is Aricepe. One nine six four five Glendale Avenue. Just have a couple of questions. I know when you guys were going back and forth with Mr. Emmons, he said that this has been an ongoing eyesore for that neighborhood for around ten years, you're saying, that it's been going on? When I was listening to Mr. Hinkle, Mr. Hinkle said that this was just filed this year, that he was in non-compliance. Being in non-compliance for ten years and just now bringing it up, it leads me to say, why was this let go for ten years before bringing it up? You know, kinda giving Mr. Piper the, "They're not gonna do nothing to me, so I can slide by." And that's probably what he was trying to do. Was he right? No. Was he wrong? Of course. However, if you keep breaking the rules, but nothing happens to you, why do you not keep breaking the rules? So going on for ten years and not having nothing done, going on for ten years, but as Mr. Hinkle said, a twenty-six-page report, Exhibit A or something, was just filed within the last year. You know, where was code enforcement for the last ten years? Given the fact that the cars on the street, I think, are the major issue here, because there is cars parked in front of people's houses. And I would be very upset if I had to come home and see five cars in front of my house. What if, you know, my grandmother wanted to come over and she can't because you're parked in front and now she has to walk and there's snow on the ground? So, you know, them cars on the street, I think they should have been towed. You know, I think there's a code enforcement says there's a three-day, has to move eleven inches every three days. I'm not sure that's happened. Them cars on the street should be towed at the owner's expense. If they're not Mr. Piper's or the buildings, they should be towed. And I'm not sure that that should go against Mr. Piper for not moving them cars if they're not his. If they're not his, that's an abandoned car, especially now it's a snowbird, that should be towed tomorrow morning. All them cars should be removed and that would, I mean, I think that's code enforcement's job. You know, code enforcement should be taking care of them cars. That's the job. Tag it, get it removed. If they're not his, I don't see how he can do anything about that. I wanted to get some kind of clarification, if possible. It says in the variance that there's no materials or car parts allowed in the fenced-in area? Is that, is that what it says?
That is accurate.
Okay. So as long as it's not materials or car parts, a physical car is okay to be inside the fenced area?
Actually, it says no outside storage of vehicles. So the entire vehicle, including those subparts that you just referenced, are also subject to the used variance.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
And if I can, I understand your questions, but this is really an opportunity for you to make comments. And if you want to ask some rhetorical questions, then it'll be up to us whether we want to answer them and perhaps draw in the attorneys and the staff and some other folks who can ask them. But it's not really an opportunity for you to interrogate the council. But please continue and ask your questions and we'll see if I can.
Okay, yeah, if there's any questions that you don't want, the thing is, I'm trying to buy this building. As far as him thinking that he's gonna be a tenant, that's not what's gonna happen. I told him that he could work for me. He's a great worker. Since I took some of my cars there, I've seen him fix fifty to a hundred Mishawaka police cars. I've seen him work on, you know, mayor's trucks. I mean, I've seen him literally do work for everybody, you know, in the city of Mishawaka and their family. I don't think he ever had a reputation of not doing any work or, you know, having, I think he has like two lawsuits against him. Somebody wasn't happy about something that happened. I'm interested in buying the building. The funds is not a problem. I have the cash. I can't buy that building if the variance is rescinded because this is what I'm trying to do with the building. I'm trying to have an auto body shop. When I was little, I had an auto body shop in my family. And I'd never had a way to, I guess, pay for it. Now I do. So I spoke to him maybe a month ago and I said, "You know what's going on with this building?" And he said, "I can't do nothing with it because I've been in a divorce since August of 2018." So I know you guys said, you know, all this stuff has been happening over the last year. Obviously, he couldn't do nothing about it. I spoke to Ken Prince on the phone one time and told him, you know, that I was interested in buying the building and that I would, you know, make sure that everything was complied with. In the variance, you said it could be a staging area of some sort? I can't, what I'm getting is, is I can't run a body shop where people's cars get crashed in the middle of the night and then the police tow them over, you know, because the insurance companies tow them over. That gate's not locked. It doesn't have a lock on it. If you want to go in there, you go in there right now. You put the cars in there. I'm not, you know, if you've ever been in a crash, if anybody's even been in a crash, you got State Farm, whoever you have, no matter how good the insurance company, you're not getting your car fixed this week. So that car might sit there for a couple of weeks before it even gets fixed. And now with the COVID, parts are, you can't, you can't get any parts. It's next to impossible to get parts. I would like to say, you know, maybe give him or give me even some type of creative options, rather than, "Tonight, we're rescinding this. That's gonna be the end of it." What's gonna happen then? The building's just gonna sit there? The cars are gonna sit there? He's not gonna care because he's lost everything already. I mean, he lost everything in his divorce. Not that it's anybody's business, but he literally lost everything besides this building that's not in the greatest of shape. A hundred percent, no, I gotta put about a hundred thousand into the building to get it where it needs to be before I can even do anything because I'm not gonna run a business that you don't feel comfortable bringing, you know, your products to. I think perception is everything in life. And if I would've came in here in sweatpants and a T-shirt, you might not have let me speak this long. So I just feel like maybe some type of surety bond. I know there's stuff like that that happens with houses that get torn down, that you have to put up a bond. And if this is not, you know, done by this time, then we keep this money. You know, with that, you'd keep the money, you'd rescind the variance and the judge would sign off on it and he'd be out of there. I would love to have John as a worker. I can't have him as a tenant. He didn't do it for himself. He definitely ain't gonna do it for me. So, I mean, why would you do something for me that you weren't doing for yourself? I don't think he would. I don't mean no disrespect to him. But I would love for him to paint cars for me. I don't think there's nobody better in the state. You know, I have many vehicles and some paint jobs that John does, you're talking ten to twenty thousand dollars. You know, people bring cars from all over the country to this man. Does it get them done on time? Probably not. But I think with somebody now that's in his corner, rather than being beat down from a three-year divorce that should have been, you know, six months, we should have been out of there, you know, give me a shot. If you're not gonna give it to him, I'll put up the money, whatever the bond may be, and say, "You got until this date to have all these cars moved." Moving forward, if that's possible, I gotta have some cars. Cars gotta be able to be in there for some amount of time. I wouldn't want no cars on the street. That doesn't make sense to me because people do live there. I own a couple of houses on Melbourne and I would, I'd be mad if cars were right there, like I said. So I think first and foremost, them cars need to get out of there immediately, within, you know, fourteen days, seven to ten days. I mean, if they don't come pick up their cars, it takes a lot longer for Indiana lien to give you a lien for that car. So legally, you take my car out of there and the city didn't do it, then I can sue you. So obviously, he doesn't want to get sued because, you know, these cars are in the lot. Well, you have your key now because you're supposed to come get it. You never come get it. Now what can I do about it? So I just felt like he's kinda been able to skate under the radar for ten years and then it's just kinda like, boom, we want you out, we want you out now. I don't think that's fair since everybody collectively didn't do their jobs for the last ten years, him and maybe code enforcement. I guess they're the ones who enforce it. I'm not exactly sure, but I would like to buy the building from him. I need that variance to be able to work. Otherwise, I can't do it there. I have to find somewhere else. Getting it cleaned up, I don't think is a problem. I think Ken Prince said something about some vegetation was installed. What's there, I don't think's good enough. And I think there's a couple of trees, a couple of bushes. I think, I don't know what those trees are that you have to have in subdivisions, the correct name. But I think, you know, those green trees that block the whole fence, so as you are driving by, it's more aesthetically pleasing. You won't see the cars, whatever's allowed to be in there, rather than some type of thing that goes through the fence. It's kind of ugly. I think getting the building painted to a more pleasing color, rather than a white that's gonna change every year because of our weather. You know, maybe a subtle gray, you know, something to that effect. I think John isn't, I think he's a good person for the community of Mishawaka. When you hear about getting cars painted, I think you think about Piper's. I wouldn't take a vehicle anywhere else. I mean, I took my vehicle from Gates to Piper. He worked there for many years and now doing his own thing, I think that he was caught up in the, "I'm losing everything, so I don't care." So the whole not responding, he wasn't even the one that, I guess, could respond since he didn't own the whole building. I've been trying to buy this building for more than a year and he keeps telling me that he could and he couldn't, he couldn't, until I looked up my case and find out like he really couldn't sell me the building because it wasn't through divorce yet. Even if you click on the divorce now on mycase.in.gov, you look up his name, it'll still say pending. So can he sell me the building now? I don't know. But I really need, you know, a little bit of time to do my due diligence. I mean, I would like to get it done without an attorney, but Mr. Hinkle said I might need an attorney. But without the variance, you know, the variance gets removed tonight, I go away and, sorry, John, but I gotta leave. That's not what I want because I really want the building. I think it's a good building. I even painted it for him for free because it kept getting sprayed, tagged spray paint on the back by some kids. I came out there just by myself with a roller and painted it, you know, and he told me, "Thank you." But I'm just trying to show like, you know, I'm gonna do what needs to be done. I think these variances aren't, it's nothing tough. It's nothing like, "We're asking you to build a wall." We're not asking you to build a retaining wall. We're not asking you to put in new sidewalks because there's a trip hazard. It's solely really about these cars, right? So I think getting the fence, you know, blocked from view with some really nice vegetation's a good move. I think all them cars on the street, code enforcement needs to tag. And if they don't move them, they need to be towed. They're not his. You can't do nothing about it. I mean, they need to be towed, period. I'm a hundred percent agreeing with that. And as far as keeping all the cars in the building, I don't know what, I don't know what body shop or paint shop you could go to that would make you have only cars inside of a building. I don't think it's possible. There's not enough room. John's the type of guy that, "Can you fix my car? Yeah, I'll get to it. Don't worry, we'll take care of you." I don't think he knows how to say no. So he has all these cars that, "I'm gonna get to, I'm gonna get to." He's had my truck for three years. This is a 2017 sixty thousand dollar Denali that's been sitting for three years because he has people before me. He's not the guy that's gonna say, "Well, he gave me more money." He was here first, so that's who goes first. So he's a really good guy. He just, he definitely dropped the ball on this one, but I'm asking, let me pick it up a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Emmons?
Yes. Mr. Jones, first of all, I take offense of saying that we've done nothing for ten years. This has been an ongoing situation with Mr. Piper from almost day one, after he signed the agreement of the variance. That neighborhood doesn't want a junkyard setting out there with all those junk cars and that if they drive by. That's not a neighborhood, whether it's light industrial or whatever, it's not a junkyard. And that's what it's turned into. And that's what the neighbors are complaining about. We have been fighting with Mr. Piper for over ten years. In fact, it's been longer than that. I've been on this council for seventeen years and it was right after I came on and I ran on the situation of Mr. Piper's promise to the neighborhood that he would run a very good business. He would abide by all the variances. He would have no cars outside, no junk outside, no cars parked on sidewalk, no cars parked on the street. And from day one, when he got that variance, it went right out the window. Now, why would I believe you? You've already stated that you want to keep cars outside. That is not what the neighborhood wants and that's not what the variance stated. So I take offense for what you've said, that we neglected our duties with Mr. Piper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Other questions for this gentleman?
If I may, address Mr. Emmons.
Please, I'm sorry.
I definitely don't mean to offend you. You know, I'm just saying it didn't take ten years to get this meeting tonight to rescind it. You know, year two, it could have been rescinded. Year seven, it could have been rescinded. I'm just asking why it wasn't rescinded then? Why did it just become, you know, a problem now? If you're telling me that it was ten years, I'm just saying like, I understand it's been a long time. And I understand you went to bat for somebody that let you down, made you look bad, made your job look bad. I get it. I really do. But what I'm saying is, at some point during them ten years, this should have already came to a head. You've had this here for ten years. It has to go.
We tried to work with Mr. Piper for ten years. Mr. Prince and his staff and the attorneys, now, Mr. Hinkle wasn't here, but our other past attorney, they're trying to work with Mr. Piper for ten years, trying to get him to turn around. We wanted him to have a successful business, but he didn't comply. He wouldn't answer reports. He wouldn't answer citations. He wouldn't answer Mr. Prince's office. He wouldn't answer Mr. Hinkle. So to say that we just did nothing for ten years, it's not right. We tried to work with him and that, but it came to a conclusion that we couldn't work with him. He wasn't about to honor the variance that we put forth to him at the time and that. And like you say, it's a disrespect to the neighborhood and we want to get it back to where you don't have the junk cars out there. You don't have the junk cars on the street. And our police department and our code department has other things to do than spend a hundred percent of the time going over and inspecting the property of Mr. Piper. And we got tired of it. So we've come to this point. And I'm sorry that you may not get that building. But maybe after we get it all cleared away, you can come back to us and maybe we can talk to you. But right now, we need to get this closed. We need to pass this variance or this proposed ordinance to cancel the variance that Mr. Piper has on that property.
Is there any?
It's been a big nuisance, a big headache nuisance.
And is there any paperwork over the last ten years that's been sent out or filed? Or has it just been like word of mouth to each other, trying to help each other?
No. There's been paperwork, word of mouth, police have been out there, Mr. Prince has been out there, Mr. Hinkle's been out there, I have been out there. There's been a paper trail for years.
So is, you know, the surety bonds or any type of creative option just not an option to you?
Right now, no. To me, we need to get this settled and maybe start anew.
So no amount of days are you willing to agree to, to say, "Let's give them, you know, let's give them twenty days to get everything done?"
No. No, I am not. We have given them ten years. We're trying to work with him.
Gentlemen, I've let this go on a little bit, but I feel as though we're replowing the same ground over here.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
So, and again, I gave you a little leeway with answering some questions.
I appreciate it.
But do you have any other comments that you wish to make to the council at this point in time?
Nope. Just, like I said, I would like to buy this building. I would like to operate the same. I would like to operate the same business, not under Pipers, under a different name. But I definitely would like to, you know, be a part of the community and show you, you know. I don't, if you, I'm going to do, what I'm saying I'm going to do, if you give me 20 days, I'll do it off, you know, just my word. I don't own the building, he doesn't owe me nothing. I'm literally just doing this to say, let me show you what I can do before I even buy this building. And then, you know, once I get the building, then we, obviously, we can talk more. I mean, you guys have the power. You know, you have the power to take it away or give it. I don't think it's going to be given again if it's taken away. It's not even going to be a conversation that's going to be had. So I don't want to buy the building and then say hopefully, you know, then that building's just going to sit there. Because I'm not going to have no other use for it.
Any other questions for this gentleman? All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone who's participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. I'm sorry, unmute your microphone and state, hard to come forward when you're participating remotely. Would you please unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record? Hearing no one, then since we deferred on Mr. Compton's question to Mr. Prince earlier, Mr. Prince, would you like to address Mr. Compton's question regarding the underlying zoning and any other items that you wish to address?
Thank you, Mr. President, Ken Prince, City Planner. Just to Mr. Compton's question, it is zoned I-1 light industrial. If the variance is revoked, auto repair would not be a permitted use and so that would have to cease. That, there are many uses that are permitted in the I-1 district, auto repair is not one of them.
Thank you.
Going, just to, hearing the discussion here this evening, Mr. President, if I may add my two cents. I agree wholeheartedly with what Mr. Triple has put together and what Mr. Emmons is suggesting in terms of revoking the variance because it is based in protecting the neighborhood and protecting the community. And I think the only thing that I would add and possibly suggested an amended course of action is if you do revoke the variance by the ordinance this evening and perhaps Mr. Hinkle or Mr. Triple can weigh in on this. But my fear would be for us to enforce that as a legal mechanism. It opens up another can of worms. Right now, Mr. Hinkle has very capably ushered this through court over a series of months that is now coming down to a court order in March. I would much rather, in my opinion, have this weighing over their head in order to get change on the property and get it cleaned up, knowing of that pending court case. If you revoke the ordinance this evening or the variance this evening, what happens in terms of an enforcement action? Does that restart the clock ticking as a result of the action? Because now the variance that we're trying to get enforcement on is no longer applicable because we've revoked it. So I would almost rather I see the council leave this as a matter pending the outcome of the hearing and then revoke it. And that would by default, not by, I don't think they necessarily deserve another chance to clean up the property. But in that time, should they do make progress, that could be a consideration of the council in the future verification of the variance. So that would be my suggestion or comment regarding the case. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I realize this is difficult and it's very important that the outcome is the same at the end. But in terms of the process on how to get there, I'm a little worried of what happens if you move forward this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
I think I share the same worry if we do that. Could we amend this tonight to make it effective the 26th to align with the court? If I was the judge, I would think.
Again, I'd refer to Mr. Hinkle on the.
Why don't we ask Mr. Triple to weigh in first?
Okay.
In particular, can you address Councilman Hayes' suggestion with regard to that amendment? I will tell you, subject to your opinion, that I would prefer to see the matter, if that was going to be the pleasure of the council, I'd suggest that we postpone it until after that date rather than to amend the ordinance so that we could consider all the facts at the time. But that's one man's opinion and I'll defer to our learned legal counsel.
Certainly, any amendment as being suggested is reasonable and up to the council's discretion. The problem I have is I don't want to pine too much on the litigation because Mr. Hinkle is handling that for the city and I don't want to take any steps that would disrupt his ability to continue the enforcement mechanisms that are put in place with the lawsuit that's on file. One of the things that Mr. Hinkle could address is if the council was inclined to move forward this evening to rescind, he would have to amend his complaint probably to add that the council has taken action in the city to actually rescind the special use because that kind of changes the dynamics a bit of the litigation since we've actually added, you know, an additional dynamic that frankly, he no longer has a legal right to operate on the property. So, you know, to some extent, it helps the litigation, but how that procedurally would move forward from a timing perspective, I'd rather have Mr. Hinkle address, so. Does that make sense?
It does. Any questions for Mr. Triple before we turn things over to Mr. Hinkle? Whether he wants to come back up to the microphone or not, I guess we'll invite him to.
I do, Mr. President, but I can wait for Mr. Hinkle.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hinkle is approaching the microphone.
Mr. President, I am being asked to ask council members to speak into their, closer to their microphones. Nobody, people are not hearing you when you sit so far away from your mic.
Okay. Duly noted.
There are a couple of things that concern me. One of them is, is, I don't, are you Mr. Jones? You gave me David Jones. Well, did I talk to you on the phone today?
No.
Okay. Anyway, there, I got a call today, I don't know who's who. That concerns me a little bit. Because I got a call today from Mr. Jones, but my ID on my phone said it was. Brandon, what? Okay, yeah, so, and so anyway, I don't know who's who. That concerns me a little bit, but the other problem is, and I sent the council a letter today with the order and I said if he, if we, even if we went at trial and he's ordered to comply with the variance and/or to pay a fine, it's not over. He has 30 days to appeal. After 30 days, if he's not complied, then we can file proceeding supplemental to enforce the judgment. However, enforcing a judgment is a hard part of any lawsuit. He won't voluntarily pay any money or comply with the variance. He may even file for bankruptcy, which of course will stay any efforts we make at collection or enforcement. So if we rely on the lawsuit, we could be looking at another six or eight months of no compliance and not anything we can do through the lawsuit. Now again, if you, if the variance is withdrawn or changed, we're still going to have the enforcement problem. But that is more immediate and I'd have to do some research on that to determine how long it would take to get that enforced. So in any event, unless there's cooperation, unless they do what they haven't done before, it's still going to take a while to remedy this situation, which is frustrating for you, I know, as the council. And it's sort of frustrating for me too, as corporation council for the city. It's, you know, it's the criminal justice, the justice system, our court system relies on people cooperating. And we have someone here who has not cooperated. So even if we do follow through with the trial and we get a judgment in our favor in the court, we still have a judgment to enforce and you know as a lawyer that a judgment to enforce is about worthless. You know, unless you can get, so the next thing that would happen then is we'd have to get the sheriff involved and, you know, that would take months. So that's what I'm concerned with. In either event, it's not, and this deadline that the judge is setting is simply a deadline to decide whether or not we're going to have a trial on March the 26th. He's not under any order at this point to clean it up. The judge ordered him to do something by then or not do it. But in any event, that's the deadline that he has to get off the hook for having to go to trial on March the 26th. But he's under no, so I think the other gentleman that testified said something about, well, it's going to happen no matter what on March the 4th. No, it's not. On March the 4th, that's just the deadline imposed by the court for him to be able to say to the court, I've complied with what Mr. Prince has asked us to do. Can we continue the trial? Can we delay the legal process? No judgment has been entered by the judge.
Let me see if I can try to summarize that just for clarity.
Yeah.
So with regard to the pending litigation, if the council took action this evening to revoke this used variance?
First and foremost, let's address Mr. Triple's question. What would, and you may not have had a chance to think it through or do the research to answer this question, which would be fair, but what procedurally would that do? What complicating factors would that visit upon you as the attorney representing the city and Mr. Prince in the pending litigation?
Well, Mr. Triple suggested that I could amend the complaint. I agree with that. I think I could amend the complaint to indicate to the court that now the council has rescinded the variance. So now he's in violation of the variance, of the zoning ordinance itself. So we, now we do have, we don't really, it makes for, now we have two. We have he's in violation of the law rather than, he's in violation of the law no matter which way you look at it because he's violated the used variance. But if you withdraw it, then he's, then he's in violation of the, there is no variance. So he's in violation of the zoning status of that area.
And you know how we lawyers like hypotheticals? So hypothetically, if that occurred, that we took action this evening to revoke the used variance. Litigation is still pending, you have to amend your complaint. But at that point in time, if there continued to be an automobile repair shop that was operated on the site, would it in fact be the case that that element of non-compliance would have to be litigated along with the other issues before the court? And then along that same elongated timeframe that you just laid out for us?
I'd have to amend the complaint to add that in. And then he would have an opportunity to, first I'd have to get, I'd have to file a motion for leave from the court to amend the complaint, to add a new count relative to what action the council has taken this evening. And then once the court, if the court grants me that opportunity to amend the complaint, then the complaint's amended and that becomes another issue that's tried at the, at the trial. It's, and that would of course delay the trial. There wouldn't be a trial on March 26th because the court would have to give him time to answer the, you know, so that would delay that. So, yeah. I don't know if there's, if that answered your question or not.
It does. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you, and you've been very helpful here. But do you believe that it provides you with any additional leverage for purposes of the litigation? That the potential action of the council to revoke the used variance is pending as opposed to being acted upon this evening?
This is going to, honestly, you may not believe it, but I think it would be nice if his divorce lawyer were here, but it would probably be an advantage to him because one of the reasons why the court valued the property at $225,000 is because the city had not done anything to rescind the variance. I think his lawyer, from, by what I can, from reading the order, his lawyer was arguing that the city might rescind the variance and the court said, well, they haven't done it and they haven't put him on notice that they're going to do it. Since then, we have, but this, the order that I read was entered early January. So it might actually help him, but I don't, now I've gotten off a tangent. What was your question again?
I almost forgot myself, Mr. Hinkle. Do you feel as though it provides you with additional leverage in the litigation that you're directly involved in for this action to be pending rather than acted upon tonight to revoke the variance? Or is it a neutral factor?
You know, it's not neutral. I have to think about that because it's the same judge. The judge that's here in this is also the judge in his divorce.
Okay.
So I don't know how the judge would, you know, he's got to do them separately. He doesn't have a conflict. One of his magistrates is the one that's doing it. I think it would be another hammer that the judge could say, look, they're going to rescind the variance and then you're not even going to be able to sell it. So get it done, that sort of thing. That would be something that if I were judged, I would say to him. But ultimately, he doesn't have to do anything until an order is entered. So the judge decides and orders him to do something. But it does, but that same, he's got that hammer over his head right now. So it's a tough situation.
It is. But I appreciate your answers. Other questions for Mr. Hinkle?
Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Mr. Mamalenti.
Yes, thank you. Man, if there was ever a night I wished I was a lawyer, I could understand.
Aim higher, Mr. Mamalenti, aim higher.
But since I am not, I'm going to try to break this down into simpler terms or a question and pardon my ignorance on this, but I think the, I think we're all in agreement that the ultimate goal is to get this property cleaned up as quickly as possible. Am I correct?
Yes.
So would it behoove us to entertain a further discussion with Mr. Jones? It sounds like he could get this property potentially cleaned up in 20 days or so if given the opportunity. I just am fearful if we rescind this, you know, Mr. Piper's probably going to say, well, I can't, I can't operate my business, so I'm not going to show up to work because I can't. So we're still stuck with the same problem that we have in moving forward. So I guess my question is no question, but I was just thinking that perhaps to reach our ultimate goal as quickly as possible, would a discussion with Mr. Jones burying a purchase agreement, et cetera, to give him 20 days to, and at that point, give him an end date to rescind it at that point?
Mr. Mamalenti, that was not Mr. Jones that was here today, this evening.
Oh, the, okay, I guess I misspoke his name. Well, the gentleman that came and spoke before us that said he was going to buy the building.
That is correct.
Okay. I guess I was just stream of consciousness spitballing here, but that was just kind of my thoughts that I jumbled down and I lost the translation in the jumbo conversation of lawyers.
Understandable. Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Other questions for Mr. Hinkle? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Then if memory serves, we are back at any further questions or comments from the council at this point in time? Mr. Compton?
I got comments, if I may, Mr. President. You know, I, this has been going on for quite a long time. I didn't realize 10 years, Mr. Emmons has been saying that, but I didn't realize it was that long. But, and then I'm hearing a lot about these vehicles. We can't get them moved, you know, it takes time to get people's leans and, but then I'm hearing, sorry, Brandon, I don't, I'm not sure of your last name, so I'll just use your first name. I hear Brandon saying that, you know, he can get these moved. I'm wondering what he can do that couldn't be done before. I just don't see the dragging this on any further as helpful. I was thinking that we might, and I could support delaying this. That could help the city, Mr. Hinkle, maybe the Pipers. But I'm not even hearing that, at least I'm not hearing it yet, that that's helpful. So, you know, we are where we are. It's taken forever to get here. The wheels of government, we all know, can turn very slow. As Mr. Hicksonbaugh said, we, I think it was you that said that, you know, we rely on people doing what they're supposed to do. And even the, you know, I get it, that the civil suit, this could carry on forever. And, and even the, you know, I get it, that the civil suit, this could carry on forever if the parties who are supposed to react to it don't. Unfortunately, you can't throw them in jail for it. I won't say unfortunately. That's probably, that is a bad choice of words, but you can't throw a person in jail for it, so that's, that threat is gone. I mean, that's, you know, so I, I, in my opinion, I'm rambling, so I'm gonna stop doing that, but, uh, um, I, you know, I'm gonna support this as, as it is, at least at this point, till I hear something different that helps me understand or explains why I shouldn't.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions or comments from the council? Sir, at this point, it's time for the council to speak. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Um, I, I remember, um, Mr. Piper coming in front of us about these very issues, and maybe it was when I was first on the council in 2012, but I feel like it was more recent than that. This has been going on for many, many years. And I was reminded from when Mr. Piper was here before, talking about the fact that he didn't have title to these cars and couldn't move them, and that was years ago. Um, to me, this is a problem that, um, hasn't been solved to this point, and I don't really feel confident that it would be solved. And honestly, listening to the potential buyer, Brandon, tonight, I don't even think that the site is feasible for the type of business that's being operated in there right now, given that they need, um, outside storage for vehicles, and the variance does not allow it. So I will support the, um, the ordinance as written this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Other questions or comments? You know, I'll add, um, and reiterate some of the comments that have been made already. It, it's unfortunate that we're at this point, and I think we all enjoy the work that we do as members of the council, because the Mr. Pipers of the world are exactly the type of people that we wanna help, and we wanna see them thrive in Mishawaka by allowing them to take advantage of a used variance and do the good work that we hope that they're gonna do. And I've never done any business with Mr. Piper. We've had some casual interactions at the Little League Park years and years ago that he was good enough to remind me of. But I hear nothing but good things, including this evening, about the work that he's done for any number of people that we know. So the work that he does isn't the issue. The unfortunate issue is that the business model that he's adopted doesn't match up with the commitments that he made and that were embedded in the, um, used variance that he was granted. And we, you know, I use the term conditions. We talk about commitments. I view these as being promises, not just to the nine people who sit up here on the dais, but to the community that we represent. And while I might be inclined to overlook someone who doesn't keep their promise to me, I struggle with overlooking the promises that were made to those neighbors who live immediately proximate to this business and to the community in general. And Mr. Compton's right. I have long believed that, and to a certain extent, we have to operate on a good faith basis here. We have to believe that people who step to the podium, understand what they're agreeing to, and intend to commit and live by those promises. Now, I'm willing to give Mr. Piper the benefit of the doubt. I don't think he consciously intended to mislead anybody any, at any time during this process. I think he believed that he was gonna be able to stick to the commitments that he made. At least I wanna believe that. But that's irrelevant. The facts are, and I, I believe they haven't been refuted at all by the evidence that's presented to us, that he hasn't lived by those commitments. I think he had the intentions to try to bring himself in compliance all throughout this process, and I understand the comment about, you know, boy, was this, is this taking him by surprise and jumping on him at the last moment? No. This goes back to 2010, 2012, when these promises were initially made, and all the conversations and all the correspondence and all the opportunities for Mr. Piper to avail himself of what we typically grant to everybody in the community, which is the opportunity to tell us, I need some help. I need some time. Can you give me a break? And it's that lack of communication that denied us the opportunity as a community to be able to give Mr. Piper the break and the opportunity to approve this that he asked for this evening. And that's unfortunate, but what's done is done. And the sad reality is that there are too many code enforcement violations, there are too many of these conditions that, in my opinion, haven't been complied with. And as much as I, as an individual, would like to give Mr. Piper and the prospective buyers of this property another break, as a representative of the community, I can't in good conscience allow for that at this point in time. What I am really, what I am legitimately open to, though, and I mean this when I say this, is, well, if Mr. Piper or a new buyer wants to come before us and wants to start fresh and wants to make a set of promises to the community that, number one, they're sure that they could keep, and that, number two, address the problems that have already taken place in this neighborhood, I'd be very open to the consideration of that. And I think that there are eight other people up here who are very fair-minded and who would listen to that with an open mind. But it can't just be the same old, same old. There has to be a real commitment to not having this business model have ripple effects out into that neighborhood, into the larger community, that cause people who have invested in their homes to be concerned. We just can't have that. It's not fair to them. I will say, what causes me a great deal of pause is that, and it goes back to Mr. Compton's question, anybody who knows that area, like we all do who have grown up here, know that that has long been an industrial stretch. I don't think there's a real, realistic possibility that somebody's gonna come in and build a home on that site. And although we didn't go through the list of those manufacturing uses that are currently zoned and be, and, and could be approved at that site without any action of this council, we better be careful what we ask for, because if somebody else picks up this property and operates it as a manufacturing concern, then we may be trading one set of problems for another. That's speculative on my part, but I think that we ought to take pause before we consider what we're gonna do here this evening. But from my standpoint, because of that element of promise to the community and because of, despite what I wanna say is Mr. Piper's good faith actions and the desire on the part of another person to step in and live his dream and, and operate there, it's too late. And I will reluctantly support this ordinance as drafted, but much like Mr. Compton, I'm also open to listen to any other thoughts and suggestions that council members may have. Thank you. And hearing no other thoughts or suggestions, if there are any other comments, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaie?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Iksenbaum?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9 to 0.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move into privilege of the floor, and we will invite members of the public to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Seeing no one physically present who has come to the podium, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we will move into new business. Is there any new business to come before the council?
I do, Mr. President.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you very much. Just wanna make a, uh, an announcement that due to a conflict in schedule, our speaker couldn't, uh, attend our, this month's Neighborhood Watch for the, meeting for the Twin Branch area. That was to take place on Wednesday the 17th, so just to confirm, we will not have a Neighborhood Watch meeting, um, for Twin Branch this Wednesday. We will have a meeting scheduled March 17th at 7:00. Um, we have a guest speaker, um, confirmed, but I will announce that at a later time.
Thank you, sir. Any other new business to come before the council? Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn is in order. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.